Time's up, technology.
Great.
Mr. Tally, I sent you by email the notes that I took during the super for the last discussion in the work session. So did you pull that up so that you'll be able to see what was captured? So as motions are made, you'll be able to see the various things that were proposed and discussed.
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Wolf, are you ready? We sure could share it. I don't have a problem with you sharing it. I sent it to Mrs. Kittredge. Do you want me to send it to you?
Sure.
Okay, let me extend it. Before I start the meeting, let me do that because I don't want to.
It's actually really good. It's my notes.
I'd like to welcome those who are participating in the Board of Education meeting in person and those watching the meeting via live streaming on YouTube. We would ask that anyone addressing the board to please use the microphone at the podium and to identify themselves for the record. As a reminder, the link to the meeting is on the district webpage under Board of Education. The streaming will run through the end of the meeting. In the event there is a disruption in the streaming, I will pause the meeting until it is reestablished. We are on item B, Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to mention before we go on to item B, Mr. Tally is joining us via telephone. So we do have a, we have a quorum present, but all five board members are present for this particular meeting. So item B, Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to ask for Mrs. Simoia to lead the pledge.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite,
Thank you very much. Please be seated. On item C, the announcement of the meeting, Mrs. Chavis, would you please announce the meeting?
This meeting has been announced in accordance with the New Mexico Opens Meetings Act and the Losina Schools Open Meetings Resolution, and is a legally constituted meeting of the Losina Schools Board of Education.
Thank you very much. On item D, approval of the agenda, Mrs. Chavis, are there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Do not have any changes or deletions to the agenda.
Thank you very much. I would stand for a motion regarding the approval of the agenda.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented by Ms. Chavis and her staff.
Thank you. Mrs. Simoia has moved and Mr. Bennett has seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. We are now on item D, the discussion and approval of criteria for superintendent search, selection, and timeline. For those persons who were not present for the board's work session, which was held immediately before this meeting, we began it at four o'clock PM. The board has gone through a fairly exhaustive list of considerations for the upcoming superintendent search, selection, and timeline. In the boardroom, I did capture notes from that work session. No decisions were made. All five board members were present for the discussion. We did cap, I did capture abbreviated thoughts for each particular section of the criteria for this. And we will now post that in the gallery or in the boardroom. Can you bring that up for us, please? Thank you, sir. I would like to make sure that this is a comprehensive and complete public discussion with various criteria and facets of a superintendent search. So having said that, the same order of topics that was discussed in the work session, I would like to hear for a motion, a second, and then discussion as we go topic by topic so that we are very clear as a board and we're following all requirements for the OMA. So the first topic that we just, that we did discuss was the posting timeline. Do I have a motion about the posting timeline?
Oh, Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
Quick point of order. Before we actually hit the timeline, I would like to make a motion regarding the process that this board be the initiate the selection opportunity or search for our next superintendent rather than delegate the responsibilities to an outside source.
So that is your first motion?
That is my process. This is the process.
Okay. I the first motion is from Mrs. Simoia, seconded by Mr. Bennett, that the Losina Schools Board of Education initiate the process to conduct a search, selection, and establish the timeline, criteria, and qualifications for the superintendent search. Is that a correct motion?
That would be a correct motion.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. During the work session, we had discussed briefly in sitting in with the NMSBA's clinic on their search process, they had mentioned the three opportunities for a search process is a headhunter, very expensive, utilizing their services, very expensive, and quite frankly, I didn't think they were very effective. And then the third process was it's not unheard of for local districts to conduct the process themselves. I do believe with the experience that sits on this board, we are more than qualified to conduct the search.
Are there any other discussion? Having no more discussion, I would like to call for a vote on the motion where this board initiate the process for the selection, search, timeline, criteria, and qualifications for the superintendency. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally? I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. That was item number five on this particular note, so we did inference of zero. So now let's talk about the posting. Do I have a motion about the method or the time to post the position?
Are you asking timeframe or?
Timeframe, yes, the timeframe for posting.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that the timeframe be set for February 6th, 2025, ending on February 16th, 2025 at 11:59 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do I have any discussion?
Yes, Dr. Soski?
Sir?
So in the 10-day period, that's 10 calendar days, I wonder if it needs to be 10 working days opposed to 10 calendar days, that's kind of a deciding point, and I wonder who is the norm?
I'm going to ask Mr. Bennett to respond to that.
Yeah, Mr. Tally, the EEOC just states that there needs to be a consistency jobs posting, and the district does it in 10 calendar days.
Okay.
Mr. Tally, I'd further clarify, in our work session, it was discussed that the methodology that's been used with the district actually closes the post at 11:59 PM, right before midnight on the 10th calendar day. So I think in sticking with the consistency and the EEOC research that Mr. Bennett conducted, I think that's a viable motion and a complete motion on the timeline.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Perfect. Is there any other discussion? Having no other discussion, I will call for the vote. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. The next topic that we discussed was screening the potential candidates. Do I have a motion about the screening process?
Madam President, I would like the screen to happen February 18th through an executive meeting with flexibility on
Timeline or process?
Timeline.
So the process, we're on the process, Mr. Bennett, so if you look at item two, let me summarize for those who were not in the work session. Some of the topics that were discussed during the screening process is that all Board of Education members should participate in the screening activity, that the number of final candidates would be dependent upon the how candidates rank against the qualifications, or the board could screen down to three viable candidates. Those were two options presented for the screening process, but primarily that the board would be participating in the screening activity and the board would be responsible for the screening. And that the, each board member would participate in conducting the background check. And the background check would include reference checks, current and past employers, possibly references, contacting the PED for input on their official record, and that's in relationship to HB 128. Also to for a requirement in the screening process that we would require fingerprints for the final candidate, a statement that the candidate would need to be able to pass a background check and that the board would review information in New Mexico courts. So that's what we talked about in the screening process. Is there any add before we go into a motion? Is there something else that I missed?
No, Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move regarding the screening process that one, all board members will be, will participate in the screening activity of the candidates. Two, the board will screen to know less than three viable candidates, but will remain open to consideration of more than three. That the screening qualifications will include a background check of references, contacting PED, reviewing of the New Mexico courts. That final candidates, the final candidate must pass the background check through fingerprint. And must pass that. And then finally, that this board will be responsible for rating the candidate based on their qualifications.
Do I have a second?
I'll take him.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Thank you, Mrs. Simoia. Is there any discussion?
So the screening, will that be on the entire group of candidates or just on the ones we
Screening?
Final.
Screening will be on all candidates.
Okay, but not fingerprinting as we
No.
talked about.
That's correct. Final candidate.
Right.
Yes, you did not mention fingerprinting in your motion.
Ben, some screening? Yeah, I mentioned fingerprinting. Yeah.
For the final candidate, right. Okay, so, Mr. Vickers, you clarified that we would screen every candidate with those particular criteria Mrs. Simoia mentioned.
Right.
With fingerprinting of the final candidate.
With fingerprinting being the final candidate. And is there any other discussion? I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. We are on the screening timeline. So looking at number three, just as a review for those persons who were not present in the work session, we talked about, or what was raised as for consideration before we go into a motion, is that the screening could occur during the regular board meeting on Tuesday, February 18th. And, but the board should remain flexible if we have a large number of candidates. The board may need to ask for or allow for extra time. That the board could go into the closed executive session to screen applicants and that we, as a board, we should stay fluid with the possibility that the board could make a decision on February 18th, 2025, depending on the candidates and the screening. Did I miss anything from those particular notes on the screening timeline?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Vickers?
Make a decision on the finalists, not on the candidate.
Right.
Correct. Is that right?
Make a decision on the final, on the finalists.
Thank you for that.
Did I miss anything? I would stand for a motion about the screening timeline. I can pry for it.
No. Do you have any, okay. Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
Regarding the screening timeline, I'd like to move that the board meet on February 18th to review the applicant, applications. That the board go into a closed That the board go into a closed executive session during that time to review the applications, my apologies.
Do I have a second?
I'll second then.
So.
Discussion, Mr. Vickers?
So, to clarify, what, i- if you have thirty applicants, uh, we probably can't do it in that one meeting.
Possibly.
So, so there'd be an option here that we may do it at this meeting, or we may delay it, depending on the doubt.
Good point of order, thank you.
That's something.
Your Mrs. Wolf, yes?
When you come out of a particular session, you do a report, one thing that you want to do up here is action as needed. All right, so that that option.
That option, correct, secondary meeting.
It's a good point. Mr. Bennett, did you hear Mrs. Wolf's comment? Mr. Tally, sorry?
No.
So, Mrs. Wolf, um, do you know, I'm gonna get a paddle for you. So, Miss, uh, Mrs. Wolf did clarify for us that when we come out of closed executive sessions, we do have to do a report out on, and then, um, make, take action as needed. So, once we are in closed executive session, we may decide that we need to extend the opportunities of screening timeline, and we would report that, um, at the appropriate time, once we resume the regular meeting, and, um, then ask for a motion to extend as necessary.
Not me.
Right, so that's, that's.
That gives us the opportunity with for ranking candidates to be able to review those thoroughly.
So I'm gonna restate the motion, sorry, or is there any other discussion, or should I, are you ready for me to restate the motion, just for clarification? Any discussion?
We're good.
Mr. Tally, do you have any discussion items that you wanted to add, or are you ready for me to restate it? Okay, so, and Mrs. Simoia, correct me if I am, if I misstep here, that the board, um, at the regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, the board will go into closed executive session to review the applicants for screening purposes. Correct. Are you ready for the vote? Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Um, we did talk during the work session about the number of final candidates, and we received some very good input um, from both Mr. Size and Mrs. Wolf. Um, in terms of, and and I believe, Mr. Vickers, you've, you added a comment in here that I didn't record. Um, that we could wait to talk about the final number of candidates after we come out of screening, as there may be very few, or there may be more than a a particular number, uh, to to offer, um, an interview. So, I am thinking that that conversation would be a future action of the board after we do screening. And I would like to, the, although we've talked about the number of final candidates, um, it's really kind of premature to make a decision until we see our applicant pool, so I would like to postpone a motion at this time on that, and wait for the, once we finally screen.
I think we.
Madam President, won't that be decided once we come out of the executive session?
We just had it on our notes, and I didn't want the community or anybody else to be confused that we didn't cover it.
And I believe we did, Madam President, mention no fewer than three candidates, so that does give us the opportunity to do more than three candidates, but no fewer than three, right? Yes, right, on your applicants, right? Yeah, okay.
No fewer than three, assuming there are three.
Assuming there are three, but do you want to make a motion to that? Or should we run away for the for the session, and then we see what happens?
Right.
We don't have to pin ourselves down on this.
No.
No, that's, that's my point, right, yeah. Okay, we already did, like, Mr. Tally, are you fine with moving them along, because it's a little premature? Okay, thank you very much. We've already covered topic number five, it was the first motion. We are now on topic number six that was discussed in the work session, and that was advertising the position to review for the, um, for the public that was not participating in the work session. We did talk about, uh, topics that were raised for consideration in advertising the superintendency position is being cognizant of the tight timeline. Um, so keeping the advertisements, uh, to to either internally or other options included various media to allow for statewide um, announcement of the position to include, uh, newspapers such as the News Bulletin, the Albuquerque Journal, if there is a newspaper in Santa Fe, um, the newspaper in Las Cruces, also a possibility of announcing on the N M S B A website just to increase our transparency. Um, Mrs. Wolf did add that we, the district does have a media specialist, and she could assist the board with announcing the, um, position announcement on social media outlets, as well as getting these, the announcement, if we chose, if the board chooses to go to, um, newspaper or other types of media, so that's a recap. Do I have a motion about advertising the position?
Madam President?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
But hoping to the N M S B A website as well, and using social media to post this, um, position.
Do I have a second?
I'll second Mr. Tally's motion, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Simoia. Is there any discussion?
Um, Madam President?
Yes, Mrs.
I'd like to go ahead and remain the motion right now for advertising the position.
I would like to amend it.
To. Um, no, I just want to, as far as a comment is concerned, um, his motion on the table is the advertising of the position. I think, uh, what I would like to do is consider a secondary motion for what the advertising will include, because that could be comprehensive, it does talk about, we do want to talk about qualifications and the materials. So, rather than make this an extremely long motion, I think the advertising of the position and how it's going to be done should remain a singular motion, and then we'll go into the what should be included in the advertising.
Sure, that would be under qualification, so we could do that after you're done with qualifications, absolutely, so that's a good point of clarification for discussion, so I'm not sure that that's an amendment.
Nope, not an amendment, just.
That was just.
I have discussion.
Perfect, there you go.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Going to call for the vote, Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
That was a yes, Mr. Tally, you were breaking up a little?
Yes.
Okay, great, and I vote yes, motion passes five zero. Our next to, our next topic was qualifications of the position. Give me just a moment, please. Okay. As a review, the board, um, talked about different options for, or different quite, uh, qualifications that the board would be interested in, and those include administrative experience in central office in a district the size of Los Lunas.
Or larger.
Or larger. Or larger, thank you, Mr. Mr. Vickers. Um, of course, New Mexico Public Education Department Administrative Licensor, current. Um, master's degree from accredited college. Teaching experience, and on teaching experience, there was quite a bit of debate about, um, the 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 boundaries, the minimal boundary for teaching experience. One thought was at least three years, one thought was six years, one thought was to not um, put a minimum boundary on teaching experience at all. There was also, um, conversation about, uh, the willingness to reside in Los Lunas, and that was later, um, clear, or added to, that maybe Los Lunas might be too, um, small, given housing and housing shortages, et cetera. So quite possibly either the District of Los Lunas, or the willingness to reside in Valencia County. Um, another topic that came up is, um, no, I think those were the only topics that came up. That, uh, one of the qualifications, it was expressed different ways, and in multiple ways by different board members, that we are more interested in being inclusive, ex, as opposed to exclusive, so we're hoping to cast a wide net. So we did not want to put specific limitations, or that was one particular comment. Did I miss any of the, for the, from that summary, did I miss anything?
I don't think so, I was gonna make it very.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion, Mr. Vickers.
I'm not ready to.
You're not? So.
Under, uh, the master's degree with accredited college, isn't that automatic if they have a, uh, head and degree of license? Don't they have that with master's degree?
My understanding is that is yes, and Mr. Size is nodding, yes.
Redundant.
Okay. That's good. I think current is pretty important. Um, teaching experience was important, would we, but one of the things, well, we need a motion before we can have discussion. So, teaching experience, so, is, do I have a motion? Madam, Miss, Mr. Vickers?
I move that, uh, the list of qualifications would include central office experience in a district the size of Los Lunas or larger. Uh, New Mexico P E D Administrative License. Teaching experience. Willingness to reside in Valencia County. And that is my motion.
Is that a period? That is the motion?
Period.
Thank you, sounded like there was another comment, do I have a second? I will second it. Is there any discussion?
Can, can I hear the book then? Again to the.
Sure, I I will try it, Mr. Vickers, and then correct me where I've made a mistake. That the qualifications include, um, and maybe, uh, let's see, I'm going to put it without required and without preferred, because you did not have that in your motion. So that the require, or the qualifications include administrative experience in central office in a district the size of Los Lunas or larger. Um, N M P E D, and current N M P E D Administrative License. Teaching experience, and a willingness to reside in Valencia County. Is there discussion?
We did use.
Yes, Mr. Tally?
So, and one of the things, you know, we definitely not limited ourselves, a lot of these things, and I wondered if having central office experience in a district the size of Los Lunas or larger is limiting as some of the other things that have been suggested are limiting. Um, I understand, you know, someone with a central office experience in the, uh, or any, it may not be exactly the real support, but there might be other districts that are smaller than Los Lunas, but still things would be, I, I don't know, I don't want to limit ourselves, because we may be excluding candidates that would be perfect for the position.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
Adding to what Mr. Sally said, um, the terminate, the term central office might apply different to other districts. Um, with language such as district leadership, or district administrative leadership, a minimum three years of district leadership might, and we could put central office or district experience prefer, because we know what, and to us, what that means, but it doesn't limit.
Yes. So I've heard two comments, um, one being about, um, the qualification of the size of Los Lunas or larger, the second being about the phrase central office administrative experience. Possibly re- rephrasing that to the administrative experience in a district leadership position. Is there any other discussion?
I do have one other point to discuss.
Sure.
Uh, the the teaching, the classroom experience, I didn't hear a minimum. And I, I realize that may be limiting us as well, but I really think that classroom experience is something that we are going to need in a, in a superintendent, if we are going to be doing a career district in in New Mexico.
Thank you, Mr. Tally, I know that, um, when I think teaching experience, I am particularly interested in teaching experience in a public school system, as teaching in private and or parochial will look significantly different than in the public school system. So I would be interested in this being a preferred, um, requirement, the preferred teaching experience in public schools. And I do agree with you, Mr. Tally, I do, I do agree that there needs to be at least three years. Three, at the, yeah, at least three years, because your first year, you don't know what you're doing, you're a little lost, it's overwhelming. Your second, third years, you're starting to figure things out, and, and we've already had Mr. Size give us an example, or talk to us about the matriculation from a level one license to a level two. A level one license is your entry level teacher, and that is, at the third year, the teacher could apply for level two licensure, but it's not, it's not guaranteed that the person would get level two licensure, there's criteria to meet. Correct, Mr. Size?
And I believe our discussion was in the six-year area.
Right, yeah, we did have discussion, as I said in the summary, that we went anywhere from like, none to three to six. So, yeah, but that would be. An interesting concept, Mr. Tally.
On preference, how are you? That would then basically, as far as narrowing down candidates, is that what you're referring to, or are you referring to a scoring, or how are you saying, how are you going to apply a preference?
People, the one that has the, the more years, I think, would get the points. So I guess we go to scoring, if all other things are equal, um, then the time teaching, you know, time service teaching would give that one the edge.
Well, Madam, I think, uh, if we're looking at the application, we'll probably be looking at the one that has more teaching experience than a, than a than a lesser, so there's probably really no need to put a number there.
than a lesser, so there's probably really no need to put a number there.
So I I wonder what Mr. Tally's point is is for for transparency, for the board to be very clear that we would have a required minimum and a reference. So the required minimum. The, yeah, the required minimum and and again, I would like to hope that the board seriously considers public school teaching experience as opposed to just any teaching experience.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering at this point in time, Mrs.
Ms. Wolf, could you read us the qualifications that were on the motion? History of the size of Los Lunas or larger. So current PED license. Teaching experience and willingness to reside in Valencia County. That's a deep out right in here. But certain changes, we'd like to change.
Well, we would have to amend the motion.
So. Withdraw my motion, but he can give a precise motion. That impresses our discussion.
I withdraw my second.
And Madam President, that means that would we be discriminating if we're looking at someone that's working at a private school, a parochial versus the public school, when actually the licensure might be the same to acquire to teach?
Private schools and parochial schools do not necessarily, from my experience, but I'm looking at Mr. Seize, do not necessarily require PED licensure. So that's where we either state the teaching, a valid valid teaching licensure and or teaching experience in the public school. Besides, do you want to weigh in on that wording? You're shifting your eyes, Mr. Seize. You want to weigh in.
The part of the class experience is correct. Multiple without require a. Either teach or be an administrator.
At those levels. Or, yeah.
So. Mr. Seize, given, given the requirement of an M PED administrative license. Isn't that automatically include teaching experience to get that license?
No.
Where you go.
You may freeze. To get an administrative license through PED, isn't teaching experience required?
No, I'll come, so you can hear me in for for the record. No, as I stated in the work session, there are alternative pathways to administrative licensure, which include school counselors, school ancillary folks support that. So the traditional route of teacher becoming administrator is more of a traditional progression. However, there are alternative pathways for other licensed employees, counselors, social workers, patient up there.
I just have to ask for a brief recess at 6:51 PM, please. I don't think. I don't think she's okay. Don't ask. Assume the meeting at 6:52 PM. And please welcome Mrs. Wolf.
Thanks.
Okay, I am going to attempt the motion. This is complicated. I move that the qualifications include required administrative experience in a district leadership position in a district comparable to the size of Los Lunas. I don't say that. About this, how do I say that? Comparable to the size of Los Lunas. A valid and current New Mexico PED administrative license. Required public school teaching of experience of at least three years with a preference for three or for more than three years. A verifiable teaching experience in a public school. And a willingness to reside in Valencia County. Is there any discussion on that?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Vickers.
I sort of, I even, even though this was my original thought, I agree with Mr. Tally that might be limiting it. And I would be willing to just scratch the the size of the district. Like period. That we can, we can take a look and determine.
I agree with you. One of the things, I agree that it could be limiting. My concern is there's a difference when you have two schools. A K eight and then a secondary school, a nine twelve. And then central office is attached with small buildings versus something that runs $130 million budget. Fifteen schools. So I I worry about, then again, that could come out in the screening. But I do worry about somebody applying. And again, this beast is, this beast is big. And and to have a knowledge of how, how, what, what works in a district the size versus a district that's smaller, I mean, I for part of my job, I sat in a district very far south from here. Their board conducted their board meeting in a room the size of our conference room, and that included where visitors could sit. So completely different ball of wax, I think. So I'm concerned about opening, but I, we could make it, I could amend the motion to say preference will be given to administrative experience in a central office leadership position in a district comparable to the size of Los Lunas.
So I think it's going to be fairly comparable with the size of.
That's correct, but Mr. Vickers' concern is similar to what your concern was at the beginning about limiting. And that's a very, that's a good concern. It's a very good, it's a valid concern.
So I think that the difference will in saying the size of Los Lunas or larger and saying comparable because that allows some, you know, a particularly smaller district to have a different, if it's just not a district to apply.
Is that what your motion said comparable?
Comparable, it did say comparable.
Probably mine. It's obviously a debatable word, comparable. Within 10%, within 20%, whatever.
It's comparable.
Yeah.
I have another debatable word, willingness to live in Valencia County. I want to live here, but couldn't sell my house or couldn't move or whatever. I think, I want to move here, I can't. I'm really a stickler for the candidate, the candidate, the minimum requirement that the candidate must reside. That we would require the candidate to reside in Valencia County.
I'm willing to amend my motion for that. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Tally, yes?
Maybe one require like six months or something like that. I think the candidate needs to reside in in the community. So, but it may not be physically possible to reside in the community day one, but we could consider to get a timeline on it, that like six months or something like that. Do we not remake your amendment people to make 16 amendments?
Oh, good luck, Mr. Tally. I gave you a specific award.
Yeah, you're.
I know, I know. Okay, so I'm going to amend my motion for the criteria that the candidate must reside in Valencia County within six months of accepting the position.
I still don't know about that because, you know, depending on the timeframe, we give contract to we're, we're, you know, someone say they get a one-year contract. You have to move here for six months.
That's a choice.
You know, so, so why put a limit on a period? Just must reside in Valencia County. That's their choice or the person's choice.
I'm sorry, what, Mr. Tally, you were breaking up a little?
I think if you put that, they, they, they apply. And, but we have to give them, I mean, we have to give them time to feasibly because I don't like no one there. I mean, if not be able to move, if not be able to move. And and as far as the time factor, you know, I I moved to set the position that you know, every position in in New Mexico, besides the contracted ones, are practically half-will. New Mexico's an half-will state. I can walk into work tomorrow and have a job, but it's a risk to for a job, everybody is tied to that.
So I'm going to withdraw my motion and we're going to try it again for the third time because this is so much fun. Who seconded that?
I'm going to get that, Paul.
Okay, so.
I'm taking.
Yes, Mr. Tally, you did. Would you be willing to withdraw your second so I can amend it for the or try it again for the third time?
Third time, yeah.
Okay, I just need a moment to kind of think about this. I move that applicants must have or be eligible for New Mexico Public Education Department licensure, administrative licensure. They must demonstrate, they must have. Golly. At least three successful years of experience in a district leadership position as an administrator or superintendent of schools. And experience in a district similar to Los Lunas. They must be, they must reside in Valencia County. One more. And, right. They must have at least three years of teaching experience in a public school with a preference of more than three years of teaching, of successful teaching experience in a public school. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Vickers. Mr. Vickers. Is there any discussion?
County. Again, I go back to the, the timeframe. Because we are superintendent that you mean going to reside in Valencia County. That you have moved to Valencia County. We have, there might be applicants that do not reside in Valencia County right now that are willing to move to Valencia County. But if we just say we'll reside in Valencia County, then either oh, I can say I'll reside there someday, or limited to those who perfectly reside in Valencia County.
A good point. Must currently reside in Valencia County.
No, then you lose the.
Yeah, you lose the broad net.
So, and I think that Mr. Tally is is correct. You've got to give them an opportunity. Once the position is accepted, the opportunity to move to the county. I I'm okay with within 90 days of the position, but accepting the position.
Pardon?
That could be part of the negotiation of the contract, that is true. But if they beat the minimum qualifications and they're not issued the job because at the end they say, well, they threw this must reside in Valencia County thing on me at the last minute, I don't want us facing any legal consequences with that.
So, so let me see if I'm restating this to where, because I'm I'm hearing the concern and I think it's absolutely an excellent point. So in terms of residency, the candidate, the successful candidate must agree to reside in Valencia County within 90 calendar days from accepting the position.
Mr. Venn, I had a concern when we were in the work session. How do you feel about that language?
Oh, I'd like willingness, but I I can go to 90. So what, let me devil, get here.
Okay.
What if they don't?
What if they don't?
Yeah.
Then we put a clause in their contract that says if they fail to do so, the contract will be terminated immediately. And I'm happy to write that in there. Really happy. Got your computer right here. Let me have it, boys.
Let's get this, we might want to take this from the tops.
Okay, I am going to amend my motion. Mr. Tally, we miss you here. We do. Oh, we do. Okay. The portion of the motion I am going to amend is that the successful candidate must agree to reside in Valencia County within 90 calendar days from accepting the position.
Can we just take the agree out?
Must reside?
Yeah.
That's a little.
So my amended motion, Mrs. Wolf, because I've not had enough Tylenol tonight. My amended motion is the successful candidate must reside in Valencia County within 90 calendar days from accepting the position. That is my motion. Who is the second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Discussion? None?
Can we read, can I hear the whole looking?
Oh, God bless.
You did that one, 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 right down in, please, right? I just wanted to hear the language. Not that language.
Okay, Mrs. Wolf.
That we two, in Valencia, area, for the similar years, or candidates, or the, um, they must be eligible, they must have, be eligible for a current, you know, so, need to license. They must have completed at least three successful years, years of teaching experience, years successful years of teaching experience in a public school. With preference given to those who have, have had four and three successful years of teaching. They must have have experience in a district, district leadership position, uh, or as a superintendent in a, in a district similar to the size of sports. A successful candidate must reside in Valencia County to locate or will relocate within ninety days of accepting the position. Quotes?
Yes, I got everything.
We have the teaching, we have the admin, we have.
And we have administrative experience in a successful experience set in office. Mr. Tally, does that check all the boxes?
Mrs. Simoy is a senior district leadership position, or as a senior.
District leadership position is a brighter nap.
Yeah, let's go seeing, my amended motion will be senior district leadership positions. No, you are the senior? Yes. Yes, did you hear that, Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Bickers seconded, that was discussion, I am going to call for the vote. Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoy?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion passes painfully, five zero. The next topic that we discussed was the process to apply. This was the eighth item that we discussed, the process to apply as a review. We discussed, uh, an electronic submission versus a paper or, uh, mail-in submission with, on paper. We discussed, um, that it could begin with a candidate submitting a letter of interest, and then a follow-up email would be sent with the required, or requesting the required documents, or that the candidate submits all required documents by the closing date of the position. So those were the things that we talked about in terms of the process to apply. Did, um, did I accurately summarize that? I will stand for a motion on the process, I just started, this is. Yeah, paper, mail, yeah, it, on paper would be either by mail or in person.
I'm sure I moved the, the process, uh, to apply, the, the candidate would submit all required documents by the closing date, and then we have the required documents as the next motion, right? That's my motion. All required documents by closing date.
Do you want to leave that open-ended, whether that's paper or by electronic?
Yeah.
Okay.
They want to do it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Yes. By the closing date and time, Mr. Bickers, or closing date?
What are my options?
The closing date would just be by, uh, February sixteenth. The closing date and time would be February sixteenth at eleven fifty-nine PM.
The problem with an in-person is that someone will need to be here till eleven fifty-nine PM, because that is what we voted as the closing time. So if we are asking for an elect, a, hey, we do not specify an electronic submission, someone's gonna have to be here eleven fifty-nine PM with that door open.
I'm gonna be sick.
So, um, yeah, so no worries.
Is there any other discussion?
So.
Would you be willing to amend your vote?
Yeah.
Candidate must submit all required documents electronically by the closing date and.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? You're welcome.
I'm gonna call for the vote. Discussion none. Mr. Tally, are you with us?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we haven't dropped you. Okay, Mr. Bickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoy?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Get into the end here, guys.
Bro, oh, God, bless.
Okay.
The ninth topic that we talked about during the work session was the required documentation. As a recap, we talked about, at a minimum, the candidate should submit a comprehensive resume to cover their education and their work history experience, their current supervisor's contact information, references. We also talked about the candidate submitting a letter of interest and the standardized Los Lunas schools application for certified employees. And we talked, and Mr. Size gave us guidance about the candidate signing the criminal history disclosure. We did talk about the pros and cons of requiring official copies of transcripts and/or verification of employment. And one of the topics that we talked about was that it would add time, and verification may be, um, hard for a particular candidate to obtain. We did talk about possibly having the candidate submit copies of their teaching and administrative licenses, although Mr. Size did inform the board that the, uh, office of personnel could verify that the candidates have active and current licenses, either administrative and teaching. Did I miss anything on that particular topic i- in terms of a summary? Okay, I will ask for a motion about the required documentation.
Madam President.
Yes, this is Simoy.
Regarding the required documentation, the eligible candidate should submit. I move that they submit a resume to include education and work experience along with current supervisor's contact information. I move that they provide us with a letter of interest. I move that they include our standard application and that we make available to them our criminal history disclosure form.
Is that a requirement in your motion?
They're going to have to pass a background check for final acknowledgement if they're offered the position. So I think at that point in time, we can, we can make this optional to them to complete as an available part of the packet.
Okay. Just wanted clarification for your memo, or for your, your motion. And on, for your motion for the standardized application, did you want to specify for certified employees?
That's the application I would recommend, that's what we have used in the past, yeah.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Tally. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoy?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. We're over here.
When, um, Mrs. Simoy had made the other motion also, she was able to do without discussing.
I was just taking notes while you guys were negotiating there, okay? All right.
The tenth topic we covered in the work session was the interview committee. What, who, and what would board members like to be considered for the interview committee? We did talk about, um, the interest in having input from the community. One particular suggestion was that there would be per-board member, one school or staff member that is currently employed by the district, and one community member that is not employed by the district. That these would be separate committees, so one committee would be the board, one committee would be the currently employed staff, and the third committee would be the community members. We did talk about the requirements, about there being an interest that the same questions are asked of each candidate in each committee, that each candidate have the same time limit, um, so, to be equal. That the community member that a board member selects must reside in the district. We also talked about all the interview committees' input, the community and the staff committees, how their input would be accounted for. And there was discussion about the committees either having a, a, a vote, or if it is input. Or, um, should the final decision rest with the Board of Education with input from these two community, or committees? Or should the committees, the two committees plus the board, uh, be equally considered? There was also discussion that the board could meet with each of the respective committees to determine what their interests are and incorporate their interests into the list of interview questions as an option. Did I miss anything in the summary?
Madam President, I think when we're talking about the interview committee, it would be the interview for the finalists.
For the finalists, correct.
Yes, not, not for all candidates.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified.
No, that's very good, thank you. Yes, Mrs. Wolf? I'm going to go to the person, let me go to the person who raised that as a, um, a consideration. Mr. Tally, you did talk during the work session about the same questions are asked of each candidate. Mrs. Wolf would like clarification, please, for the minutes. Were you talking about the same questions for each of the committees, so the community committee would ask the same questions as the employee committee, as the Board of Education committees? What were you envisioning there? You may make a motion, Mr. Tally.
I would like to move that we create a committee to come up with, to do the same for individual concerns and what we might ask the superintendent. And we include each board member to one staff member and one community member that is not a member or not employed by the district. And that the final interview of the final candidate be by the board only and not by the committees.
Can I restate that, Mr. Tally, just from my understanding?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, just, correct me if I'm wrong. You are, you have moved that the board create a committee to be composed of one school or staff member per Board of Education member and one community member per Board of Education member that is not employed by the district to advise the Board of Education on the topics and/or questions and that the final interviews would be, would occur in front of the Board of Education only.
Mr. Tally?
I will second the motion, and we're gonna go to discussion. Mrs. Simoy?
Mr. Mr. Tally, would you be willing to amend the second bullet on one community member per board, per board member who resides in the district and is not a member, or is not employed by the district?
I am very willing to amend that.
Thank you.
And I will second the amendment. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bickers?
So that's exactly how that works. If I have two people, do I just get their input and build a questionnaire form off of that, or?
Well, Mr. Tally's motion was a committee, so Mr. Tally, I'm going to infer that when you say committee, you would actually think that we would meet in person, or if a person needed to join us by Zoom, they could. But it would be, it would be not me going to my two representatives and gathering their input and then reporting back to all of the colleagues, but it would be one large committee meeting, is that what you envisioned?
That, that's what I envisioned, and then, um, if, if I choose two, two other members and one of them can't make it, we wouldn't necessarily have to have another one take their place, but we try to form the committee as best possible, and then those who attend attend. But yeah, that, that was kind of my intent.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Bickers?
Yes, I think so, it, it, I think, uh, one of the things I was brought up regarding asking the same questions, that our questions for the candidate versus staff questions versus community members might be quite different based on their.
If we have the committee, we can, we can get, well, we garner those questions from the staff and from the community. But the ones, the, the questions will be asked by the Board of Education at interview time, not by other committee members. They want to be present, would be my vision.
We take their input, is what his.
That's what I think, we take their input, and, and then we are the ones that come up with the questions based on that input. And then we interview all candidates that we, that are fine with using those questions that we have derived from, the input from the committee.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, uh, uh, something like that, where there'll be a limit on how many questions are gonna be asked. We don't want this to go on.
Oh, you don't want to.
Thirty, thirty questions, but you know what I mean, it's like, that's. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, so we can feel, fill their information, and then we can collaborate later. above with the certain amount of questions that will, three of them that will be asked by the finals.
Yeah.
Will be incident, while there might be another topic, there don't need one. The people that may not be as important as everybody pick up is top out. But we, we'd be the ones that derive the questions from the input and we wouldn't be limited to having a certain number or, or limited to, you know, too many or too few questions.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, that being said, we look in at the timeframe to have to have some.
Yes, yes, we would. That, that will be another motion. That will be another topic. Step by step. You guys are tired and we have been in the heart of this meeting. Okay, having no other discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
My vote is yes. Motion passes five zero. The topic we did not discuss that Mr. Bennett raised, and we're so grateful that he did that, is item number eleven, and that would be the timeline to form the committee and receive input. So we have not discussed this at all. This will be absolutely, somebody's going to pose a motion and then we're going to have to go into discussion. So this could be a little bit of a process here. So since you raised it, Mr. Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to move that we conduct a committee meeting, let's say, February twenty-fourth. Just a date I'm throwing out there because it's going to be a discussion, sure.
What date is February twenty-fourth?
Oh, no, if we need it.
So February twenty-fourth is a Monday because we would be asking community members.
I would like to, I'd like to redo them. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think, that being said, the postings will be closing on the sixteenth, correct? So then before, we need to probably get it done before the closing.
As far as the committee.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so, so I'm going to second your motion for the purpose of discussion, but we're going to be amending here, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So let's just think about where we're at right now. Just give up timing, Mrs. Wolf. So sorry, it's, okay. The posting, if it goes out on the sixth, or it will go out on the sixth because we've already moved on that. It will close on Sunday the sixteenth. Next week, we're in Santa Fe, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So that we're running a tight timeline to do a performance committee on Monday and Tuesday. So I'm wondering if we don't need to, and plus contacting people to see if they would be available. So I'm wondering if we don't need to see about meeting with the large committee the week of the seventeenth, including Saturday, the twenty-second. Just as a timeline, because if we do this after work, when people could get here, because our community members will be working, we would be starting a meeting at six o'clock. So I'm wondering if thinking about Saturday, February twenty-second, to have our representatives come in and that way we could easily block off three hours, like nine to noon, to receive their input. It's a consideration, just a thought.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
So the motion was to, the motion that was passed and approved was that each board member would select a community member that resides within the district and is not employed, employed by the district and a employee within the district.
Yes.
To ascertain their feedback. Does this have to be in a group setting or could not the board members meet with those individuals on their own?
Well, the clarification in the discussion that Mr. Tally made, that I think people voted on, was that it would be in-person committee meeting. I know that's my consideration when I voted yes. Because Mr. Vickers asked for the clarification, would we go out and poll our people individually and then respond back?
So they're not going to be, so we'll have our, we'll have the opportunity to review the candidates together in executive session. We had already voted that on the timeline. So from there, we have narrowed down to, I'm going to hypothetically put out three, four candidates. At that point in time, during that period of the week, is there an opportunity of that week to get with before a decision is made from this board, is there an opportunity for us to pull together those individuals that are selected from, to be our representation? And ask their opinions, what are they seeking in a candidate?
That's where I'm suggesting if we win the week, because if we close on Sunday, the sixteenth, then the week of Monday, the seventeenth through Saturday, the twenty-second, while it's fresh on our brain, somewhere in there.
You guys are toppled. Seventeenth.
Oh, we're closed on the seventeenth, correct?
Yeah.
So to pull people together on Tuesday, the eighteenth through Saturday, the twenty-second for consideration. Are there any obstacles to possibly meeting on Saturday, the twenty-second?
Yeah.
You have an obstacle?
I'm out of town.
You're out of town? Okay. So we could meet on, and we have a regular board number, board meeting on the eighteenth, so let's not do it then, please. Yes, Mr. Vickers.
And there's no, there is nothing stopping us from calling two people to walk and saying, would you be willing to serve on a committee?
That's correct.
Right.
So let's set a date for that meeting.
That's.
And that way, that can be included in our ask. Can you serve on committee, going to meet on this date for this purpose?
Yeah, that's correct.
Conflict.
And that would be something like.
So we could do that with, before we screen the candidates and all that and have a committee ready, waiting for a certain date.
That's where we're going?
For the question. So I think we should set a date.
That's where we're going.
Yeah.
We can't do it Saturday, apparently.
No.
That Saturday.
Could we do it Thursday, the twentieth?
That's fine with me, but you know.
And I agree with, with Mr. Vickers, because if we start making phone banking now the people we want here, they'll know already they have a given date.
Right, right.
And.
Mr. Vickers, would you be available? Twentieth?
I might have to be available on two or something, but I, I would name it Thursday somehow.
Mrs. Simoia?
On what day? Is that Thursday?
It's a Thursday. We could do it on Thursday. I can be available. Okay, Mr. Bennett, I'm going to. People would be coming in from work, so I'd say five-thirty. I would hate to ask our community members to take vacation to be.
We're also asking our, we're asking our employees to stay later than their normal schedule, though. If we put them all together.
True, but this, this is not being paid as employees, the community thing that they would be part of. Well, we're not looking to pay them. We're asking them to be part of this.
Work for free.
They do. That's true.
So, Mr. Wolf, would you be willing to amend your motion?
Yes. I would like to amend that. The, the interview committee meets on Thursday at five-thirty, the twentieth.
To take input from.
To get input for questions that will be given to the, the application, applications, whatever you call.
I second the amended motion. Is there any discussion? I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Are there any other considerations for the superintendent search, selection, and timeline that I have missed or that we did not cover in the work session that is coming to your mind? Mrs. Wolf, would you like to offer something for the board? Please, share your thoughts. To do the interviews. Oh, you've got a plan to do the interviews. So topic twelve, is this something the board would like to consider tonight or would we like to announce that on February eighteenth?
Like to announce on February eighteenth with knowledge, yeah.
That's right.
Right.
Less punchy, more coffee.
Less punchy, more coffee. Save that topic for February eighteenth, the timeline of the interviews.
The gender for the.
Oh, no, I, you just raised it as a point for us to consider.
Chavis, your staff. Just saying, it's perfectly fine.
So, thank you. Chavis?
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
I'd like to move that we delegate yourself for, to request the approval from Ms. Chavis to delegate the authority to her staff. So we can go ahead and get this posted.
Are you talking about receiving the required documentation?
Oh, everything.
We're just going to, I can see.
She needs, we need to delegate authority. We need to delegate authority and who's going to be basically from, from the board. And we're going to delegate you to work with, Ms. Chavis to delegate it accordingly down her office.
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Wolf. I will second that motion. Mr. Tally, did you hear that back and forth? Is there any discussion? I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Wolf, for bringing that to our attention. Is there anything else? Okay. You're now ready, believe it or not. Item S. Is the announcement of meetings. This brings us to the announcement of meetings that's allowed by the Open Meetings Act and the District Open Meetings Resolution on occasion. A quorum of the board members attend the same function, including school and district celebrations and ceremonies, as well as sport functions, conferences, workshops, trainings, and community events. Board members will refrain from discussing and/or acting on listen to schools Board of Education issues in those settings. In addition, only official meetings are published, and if other meetings are scheduled, they will be announced in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. With that being said, I would like to announce the following meetings. February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Finance Committee meeting in the Central Office Conference Room at three o'clock PM. February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the Audit Committee meeting in the Central Office Conference Room. Attendance is by invitation only at four o'clock PM. February thirteenth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, four board members will be attending the New Mexico School Board Association Conference at the Eldorado Hotel, three oh nine West San Francisco Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight seven five oh one. This, the purpose is for board training as required. Statute and P and D forum will be in attendance. No action will be taken. And on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, a regular board meeting in the Central Office Boardroom beginning at six o'clock PM. I am on item G.
Yeah, one more. We have February twentieth.
Oh, February twentieth, that is correct. I'm sorry, Mrs. Wolf, what, February twentieth? Oh, that's right. Thank you. And on Thursday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at five-thirty PM, there will be a Superintendent Search Committee meeting. This will be by invitation only. It will occur in the Central Office Boardroom. That brings us to item G, the closed executive session. I would stand for a motion to go into closed executive session.
Madam President.
Mrs. Simoia.
I move that the board go into closed executive session for discussion of limited personnel matters, specifically the evaluation of our acting superintendent. This is pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one, H two, and a forum will be in attendance. This is for discussion only and the motion will be.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mrs. Simoia has moved and Mr. Bennett has seconded to go into closed executive session. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
Can I go? Yes. Motion passes five zero.
And we'll bring him in there.
Yes. Uh, the board will be in closed executive session. I'm going to take a twenty-minute recess. So the board will be in closed executive session at eight oh five PM. Uh, Mr. Tally, we're going to hang up on you and redial from being in closed exec, okay?
All right, do you want to get your line?
Yeah, about eight o'clock-ish.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
We drove off with Adam.
Yeah.
Sorry, brother.
All I need is, hello? I'm gonna exalt this meeting back to order. It is key to yours. Oh, no, we're not. Okay, we're not quite ready. You guys ready? Technology is ready? Um, yeah, that is, I need a motion. Wait a minute. Yes, so I'm on H. I'm on the report and closed executive session.
No, gotta go back in. Meta President.
Say.
I move.
So I just want to point out that H came before I, so I just, okay. Okay. I apologize. We're really, it's been a long day. So I would stand for a motion re- Madam President.
Madam President.
Please.
I move that we go back into regular session at ten oh three.
Oh, my God. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there a second, please? I second it. Thank you, Mr. Tally. Mrs. Simoia has moved and Mr. Tally has seconded to go back into regular session. Is there any discussion? I'm gonna call for the vote, Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Back to item H. I do a report. As announced, the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education went into closed executive session at six oh two. Was it six?
No, eight.
It was eight oh two PM. As stated in the motion, the discussion in closed session was for limited personnel matters specifically for the evaluation of acting superintendent pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten fifteen one H two. I attest that no other topics were discussed than those enlisted in the motion and that no action was taken during the closed executive session. I am now, thankfully, on item J, adjournment. With that being said, this leads us to the adjournment of this meeting. I would stand for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Tally. Thank you for the second, Mr. Tally and Mr. Bennett seconded. Uh, Mr. Tally has moved and Mr. Bennett has seconded to adjourn the meeting. I will call for the vote, Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Eric.
Is adjourned at ten oh four PM. Goodness. Oh, we are punctual. Okay, thanks, Mr. Tally.
Hello.
Hello. In dark.
Oh, yeah, it's before.
Thank you, Brian. So much. Andrew. Bye, Southeast. I'll see you tomorrow.
Bye.